Okay, let's get started. Off script, I would just like to start by saying, to run for school board means that you're never going to please anyone, any of the time, and that the keyboard warriors are, I would say, the ugliest when it comes to, everybody seems to have an opinion and knowledge of how to run a school board. So, thank you in advance to all seven of you for running for this prestigious and important position. Good afternoon and welcome to the 2023 Municipal Election Candidates Forum. This is for the Unit 4 School Board. Thank you to the candidates for agreeing to participate today. We are really grateful for your time. We would not be here today if it weren't for the cosponsors, the League of Women Voters of Champaign County, I'll Vote of Champaign County, the NAACP Champaign County Branch, Indivisible Rural Illinois, Bend the Arc, Jewish Action, Champaign Urbana, and the News Gazette. Daryl Holman, thank you for your technical prowess. We appreciate.
Mike's on it as well.
Mike, we wouldn't be here without you keeping us on air, so thank you. And of course, again, the hardest job in the room today, not for the candidates, no offense, it's for the timekeepers here, Michelle Branch and Jennifer Lask. Thank you all. Today's questions came in advance from a publicly available online survey, so thank you to the public for input. We are not taking questions from the audience today. So, our timetable, we have 80 minutes. If you do the math, 15 minutes practically will be the introduction, because each candidate gets two minutes. 15 minutes will be the conclusion. They get another two minutes to make their case. Why should we elect them? So, let's review some of the format for today. As I mentioned, two minutes opening, two minutes closing. Each question, you get one minute, and we're going to mix up the order for that. We are going to keep civil dialogue. It's required. I got spoiled with the mayor and the city council. They were all super respectful. You're going to refrain from, of course, negative speech. I just have to say this. If any of you are lawyers, you understand. I'm just covering myself here. You can't mention another candidate by name. As you see, we are being photographed and video recorded. You can find the stream on the Champaign League of Women Voters YouTube channel. Please don't photograph or videotape. And if you feel that you're going to be possibly in the paper or on TV and you don't want to be, talk to Daryl or Mike and tell them, please don't put me on camera. Some of us prefer to be on the radio. You can learn more about the candidates. I don't know if James Manrique is still here, but he's amazing, and he put together votchampagne.org/guide. Most of the Q and As are uploaded there. All right, pledge to vote. Hold on, I'm really, I can't remember which, I have a Boy Scout. Please don't tell them I forgot which hand. But, do you belong to a book club, or a high school club, UIUC club, maybe your office, or an organization? Ask your group if they're willing to pledge to vote. When you pledge to vote, we're going to post it on social media so that everyone knows. To sign up your group, just go to the Facebook page of any of our co-hosts and look for their candidate forum post. There are QR codes at the back as well. We have a handout back there. Grab it, and you can upload it. Help yourself to snacks. Afterwards, we're going to hear from the Parkland candidates. They're each going to give us two-minute summation, so stick around for that. There's going to be a continued Q and A or informal meet and greet in Room C. All right. I'm done talking until I have the questions. I'm going to shuffle it around. Let's kick off today with two minutes, and I'm going to go in alphabetical order, which means we're going to kick off with Amy Armstrong, and she's going to tell us why we should reelect her. I should also mention that Jeff here has his own mic, and you will have to share. So, slide it back and forth between two. So whoever is sitting next to you, you get to share a mic with them. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Elizabeth. So, first of all, I start out thanking all of you for attending today and to the partners for putting on this forum. This is an incredibly important discussion for our community. My name is Amy Armstrong. I am a mother. I am a caregiver. I am a community member. I work for Chambana Moms as a finance manager, and our family owns and a business in Urbana, locally owned. My husband is born and raised in Urbana. We have four children. I have a son who is a proud graduate of Centennial and our Novak Academy, which is our alternative setting. He is now awaiting the results of his bar exam, so we have success from our alternative programming. We also have three daughters. One is a junior at Central High School in the Functional Life Skills Curriculum, receiving a full complement of special education services. We have twin student athletes in the K-8 International Prep Academy, a Unit 4 dual-language program, and our girls are bilingual and bicultural in Spanish. I was recruited to run for the board in 2015 to help address the facility issues facing our community. A community-led committee found over $300 million in facility needs in Unit 4, and as we began to sunset, an amazing referendum passed by our community. We then turned in 2019. I ran again because I found that there was no strategic plan that had been created for Unit 4 in over a decade. As a business owner, we all know that you have to have a plan, and you have to have a business plan that shows you where you're going. The superintendent began the work with a community needs assessment, which highlighted the segregation of our community and the enormous disparity in student achievement. The work led by four-point, along with the community, created the current strategic plan in place, and then COVID-19 hit. Anyone involved at public schools knows that the global pandemic was deeply impacted here against, with our teachers and our students. It was excruciating and exhausting for everyone. And I plan to run again to ensure our ESAR funds are used appropriately and push direction to federal and state legislative funding.
Thank you, Amy. Jamar Brown?
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Again, I would like to thank the sponsors and the cosponsors of this as well. And also, I would like to thank all of you, the people, for taking your time out to come in and meet the candidates and get all the information so you can make the best decision for yourself and your families, and also for our communities of who should represent our lovely city. As you said, my name is Jamar Brown. Been a member of this community for the past 40 years. I'm a Unit 4 graduate, went through all of my school at the Unit 4, Badenfield, over to Dr. Howard for the gifted program, back to Badenfield, Franklin, and then Centennial. Graduating in 2001 with that, where I do see some of my teachers are in the audience here. So, I have that. I have sat on, in my adult years, I have pretty much dedicated my life to community service. I do work at the University of Illinois for the last 16 years, but my passion is definitely community. And I've sat on city commissions. I was the vice president of, vice chair of the Human Relations Commission for the city. I've sat on different police review boards and things to change the police complaint process. I sat on those boards and commissions. And in 2011, 10 years after graduating from high school, I became a member of the Unit 4 School Board as well. So, this will be me setting myself up for the second run. During that time, I felt like I built many, many relationships and tackled many issues specifically for those students who were not necessarily on college track, or didn't want to go to traditional four-year colleges, and specifically bringing in a lot of the trades in. And so, and also building great relationships with our community and keeping them fully abreast of everything that the district was doing and being fully transparent. And so, I'm looking for your vote, because I would like to get in again and continue that work again, and also, again, bring the community and their voices back to our district.
Thank you, Jamar. Jeff Brownfield?
I'm holding my mic, and I can't get it set up. Thank you. Thank you all. Hello, my name is Jeff Brownfield, and thank you again for inviting me, as the others have said, to the forum today. And I hope to earn your vote as I sit here and answer the questions and speak with you all. I'm running for the board to provide additional opportunities for my children and all the kids within the district. I'm a lifelong resident and have attended every level of public education in Champaign, including Parkland and the U of I. There's a necessity to work with our faculty and administrators to revise, refine, and develop policies that allow our students to thrive. We're blessed in Champaign with amazing teachers, with super bright students, and we need to make sure that we push and prod to allow all of them to succeed and flourish. The board administration exists to facilitate the educational process. Simply put, we're the least important part of the entire system. We work for the students. We work for the parents. We work for the teachers. I pledge to efficiently and effectively use our resources to better educate our children. For months, I've had the pleasure to meet with a significant number of teachers throughout the district, faculty, support staff union presidents, community leaders, and most importantly, our students and parents, to determine how to assure our students succeed. There's a few consistent themes that have come through during these meetings. Teachers want to teach. They want to focus on their kids. They say, let me teach. Don't bog me down with 10 or 15 other things during the day, so I'm taking time away from my students. From student parents, I hear, give me facilities to learn that are free from disruption and violence. Parents see the importance in fundamental education in the areas of reading, language arts, math, and science. Not one parent thinks it's a good idea to have their kid on a bus for 20 to 40 minutes. We must resolve the issues such as the teacher shortage and support staff shortage. Through my own professional experience and research, I have a plan to resolve these issues, and I'm happy to discuss it. We are aware of our poor academic scores for our students, and that it has been going on even prior to COVID. We need to be more effective. As wisdom has it, when you're stuck in a hole, stop digging. So, let's stop digging. Let's start collaborating with all of our parents, with all of our teachers, with all of our administrators to increase our educational accomplishments for our children. We owe them that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Betsy Holder?
I would like to echo everybody else in thanking everyone, sponsors, and everyone involved in putting today together, and everyone who's here participating and watching. My name is Betsy Holder. I'm a sixth-generation Unit 4 alumni. I graduated from Central High School in 1999. I went on to attend Dartmouth College, where I graduated in 2003, and I then pursued a law degree and graduated from Vermont Law School in 2006. Following that, my husband and I returned back to the community, where we both practice law. I've got my own firm, Holder Law Group, and we have four children, age seven to 15. My oldest daughter is currently a sophomore at Central and is also a swimmer, student athlete. My reason for running for school board is the schools are the foundation of our community. They're the building blocks, and they impact everything from our businesses to crime to everything else. And that is, and the one thing that I am most focused on is, which I would be as a candidate for Unit 4 School Board, is what we are doing with our students' grades, K through 3. We have, the data shows that there is a substantial achievement and opportunity gap with our children from the time they hit kindergarten up through fifth grade, and that continues on through high school. We need to focus on the literacy, the math achievement in this age group, as well as early childhood education, to create more of an equal and equitable environment for these children to flourish and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Betsy. Mark Holm?
Again, thank you for the sponsors of this event and inviting all of us. I'm Mark Holm. I've been, I grew up here in town. I went to Kenwood, Jefferson, Centennial. Daughter in the district. My daughter went to Westview, Edison, Champaign Central. So, I'm familiar with the school, with the school system. You know, lost my train of thought, sorry. I've been on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, or as a volunteer since 1985. So, I've been dealing with the kids in our school district through the Boys and Girls Club for over 38 years. I've been involved with Developmental Services Center for well over 20 years, and seeing how that our, our people at DSC have gone through the school district and received services there. So, I'm kind of familiar with that. I believe that we need to bring a business standpoint to our budget and our funding. I believe that great cities have great schools. So, I think we need to make Unit 4 excellent. I think we need to focus on the basics. Once we're excellent, once our, once our students are excellent at the basics, then we can move on to other issues. But, we got to get them excellent at the basics and prepared for life skills to be successful individuals and adults. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Holm. Now, Mark Thies?
Thanks again. I guess I'm almost the last one to talk. Thanks for the opportunity to visit today. My background is I grew up in a small farming community 30 miles north of Bloomington. I attended Illinois State University, University of Minnesota, and the College of Financial Planning. I'm a certified financial planner in Champaign for the last 23 years, with a lot of experience in evaluating budgets and priorities of those budgets with fiscal responsibility. I'm married to Leanne. She's a retired elementary school teacher for the last 32 years, 25 in the district. So, I've learned a lot about the schools over the last 25 years. I believe that we need to make our community better by giving back. My dad was a big volunteer, and I think to be successful and making our communities better, so I volunteer. I volunteer. My ties are with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, First Presbyterian Church, Meadowbrook Church, Champaign Rotary, and our Homeowners Association. And I believe strong schools equals strong communities. That's the focus of what we need to do. The priorities that we need to do to make Unit 4 stronger is we need to get back to the basics of teaching, reading, writing, math, and basic science. The current 76% of all of our elementary students, all of our elementary schools, are not achieving academic standards in math and English. And you look at low income, it's over 90%. I believe we can close this achievement gap by focus on that back-to-basics teaching. It's especially important, as some of the other candidates have said, to focus on kindergarten, first, and second grades, so they can achieve these standards before they get promoted. Because it's extremely hard to play catch-up with your peers if you're promoted without the foundational skills necessary to achieve. I think the other major issue that we have, I'll save that for later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And A.J. Zwetler?
Thank you. With a, with a name like Zwetler, I'm always the last. So, thank you, everybody, for coming, everybody who organized this. I'd like to start by, by sharing that I'm the husband, the son, and the nephew of three extraordinary Unit 4 educators. I was a Unit 4 student myself, not so long ago. The education I received in Unit 4 prepared me for many things and helped shape me to the person I am today. I learned to be kind and accepting of everyone, and eventually recognized that my purpose was to advocate for people who need a little more support. From Southside to Markstall, the first year it opened, to Jefferson, I'll always remember where I came from. Naturally, I grew up to be a social worker and currently lead a program for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, focused on helping them to connect to this community through art, volunteering, employment, and advocacy. I have over 10 years of leadership experience that I would bring to the board. What can I say? I'm a Champaign-Urbana kind of guy. And I'm passionate about serving this community. I can't think of a better way to do that than to serve on this board. I want to continue the momentum of the current strategic plan and ensure that all students see the progress from its action. Students of color, LGBTQ+ students, multilanguage learners, everyone deserves to have an accepting and functional place to learn. I'll work tirelessly to ensure that students with disabilities have the best possible supports and the roadmap to success after graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. And A.J., we will be mixing up the order, so you will be second on this first question. We're going to kick off the first question. Betsy Holder, you will be first. What is your position on the recently approved modification to Unit 4 School Student Assignment Plan, and what are the benefits and potential issues that should be addressed?
Thank you very much. That's, that's a very big question. I guess my response to that is I would like to see how it will play out. There are definitely positives and negatives to it. One of the issues that I have is with some of our more at-risk students being potentially displaced from a school environment that they have known, where they have communities, where they have teachers, administrators who know their background, who know their families. That, for me, is, is one of the issues. I think with anything with regards to schools and where, where people are assigned, you're going to have critiques one, one way or another. No one is going to be happy in, in any of those, in whatever is chosen. But, with regard to this, my, my reservations would be with our most at-risk students.
Thank you, Betsy. A.J.?
Well, yeah, so that is a really big question, and I am, am very sensitive that it's, it's a big concern for a lot of people. I've been following this, and it's been looked at from almost every single angle that you could possibly look at. And as our moderator said, that you very much can't make everyone happy. But, I, should I be elected to this board, I would, I would be there to oversee this, to make sure that everybody's successful and has the ability to, you know, go to which school that they would like to go to.
Thank you, A.J. Mark Holm?
At this time, I can't think of a more diverse, divisive issue for our parents and our kids right now. The process, I'm not sure of the process, is I have one question that I have not been able to find an answer for, is how does this plan improve the educational outcomes for our kids and our families? I have yet to find the answer to that. So, as a board member, that would be my job to make sure that we implement what's best for our kids and our community at that time.
Thank you, Mark. Jamar Brown?
So, living in Champaign, we have an extremely diverse community, but it's also an extremely segregated community. And so, my stance is definitely that we definitely have to have some schools of choice and not a neighborhood schools, or now our schools become extremely segregated as they were before. And I know with our previous schools of choice, it was every parent got to choose, got to choose where they sent their children to. And that was probably the most open. It was not perfect. By far, it was not perfect. But, it was the most open system that we had, where parents get to choose where they go. It wasn't dictated by the schools unless you were one of those children or parents where you registered very late in the year or after the year started. But, for the most part, about 80, 85, 90% of the students got their choices of where they went to school. That was a family decision, not a Unit 4 decision, of where they went to school.
Thank you, Jamar. Amy?
Thank you. It's actually in the strategic plan that we had to address the disparities that were coming from schools of choice. It was not about academic performance. It was about balancing our school populations. We landed at the recommendation of the superintendent after extensive community input and the guidance of our consultants that came through that do are specific to demographics. The city is segregated, as already has been suggested, and our schools do not reflect how our community lays out if we go back to neighborhood schools. Dr. Boozer brought forward a recommendation that, that she felt was best right now based upon the feedback from the community to not displace students. So, instead, they tightened up the algorithm. They're going to tighten up the inputs. They're going to put the guardrails in place. There's no more transfers, no more wait lists, and hopefully, those, those items will make an impact. Moving forward, we're going to have to watch sibling preference that we don't disrupt the actual intent of schools of choice.
Thank you, Amy. Jeff?
It seemed like we answered a question we didn't ask. The question that we asked was, what do we do about school of choice? And we ended up with, let's shut down the year-round schools, and let's move kids that have already been, that have already selected grade schools to a different middle school. I'm not sure how we got there. So, I don't know that it was an overall bad idea. We just got there in a really weird way. And I think my, my biggest concern about all of it, you know, turns out to be, is that if we're going to have community engagement, then we should allow for the community not only to engage, but then when we change course, let them reengage into that. I was watching part of the board meeting last night, again, that I had taped, and at the 1 hour 36 minute mark, you can start seeing where the board and others start discussing the issues. And all of the issues of what we were changing were to help the administration. It will help payroll. It will help a different calendar, and so on. Those are administration issues. Those aren't kid issues. Those aren't education issues. Oops, I'm sorry. Stop. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And Mark Thies?
I believe every student deserves an excellent neighborhood school. You should be able to choose where you want to go, and it should be close to your neighborhood. If you ever remember the Blue Star families, we all used to be able to walk to school, and we had family members or community members that were there to help you if you got in trouble on your way there. If we have a low-performing school, I think we need to hire the best possible teachers possible. And if we can pay them more, give them bonuses, hire more aides, let's get those classroom sizes down. It's all about classrooms and the attention that we can give these kids. We need to have strong, strong neighborhood schools so kids can walk to school again. I think every child deserves an opportunity to learn, and you're not going to learn by being on a bus.
Thank you, Mark. This next question, we're going to start with you, Jeff. As a member of the school board, how do you plan to close the achievement gap as measured by academic performance and provide equal opportunities for students to succeed?
Well, it's pretty simple to close the academic achievement gap. We have to teach all our kids. And I think the problem is, is that we have schools and we have classrooms that unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, are not performing as well as others. So, we need to put resources at those places where those students are struggling. And again, if it's additional, I think, I think Mark was just saying in the last question, if it's additional teachers, we need to put additional teachers there. If it's additional aides, we need to put additional aides there. You know, our kids, whether they're... We just need to allow our teachers to teach them and not have to do 20 other things. Let them concentrate on the kids. The achievement gap between those that are low-income and high-income, that should, that really should not be the issue at all, because we should be teaching them all exactly the same things, exactly the same things. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mark Thies?
I believe we can close the achievement gap by focusing on that back-to-basics teaching. It's really especially important, again, I've said this once already. We focus on kindergarten, first, and second grades. We need to have those kids achieving at standards before they get promoted. So many of my wife's kids got promoted and they, they couldn't read at the level that they were at before. And I believe it becomes very hard to play catch-up to your peers when you're promoted without the foundational skills needed. So, I think we need to focus on, on just those priorities of back-to-basics teaching, reading, writing, arithmetic, basic science.
Thank you, Mark. Amy Armstrong?
Thank you. I don't speak in deficit language about our children. Our children have the capacity to learn, and our children have an opportunity gap. And the current strategic plan and the work that Dr. Boozer is doing with administration is to push forward and move into where we need to address as, as a community. The Lift Program that we are partnering with our city with, and Operation Hope, there are programming pieces that we can wrap around our students. But, when we talk about our students, they can read. It's the teaching. But, when we've had five days already in January disrupted by state legislated and mandated testing, that disrupts the classroom environment. It disrupts the teaching that's going on, and that is at a state and federal level. And it would be, actually, at the board's work to push into our legislators to change that disruption that's happening constantly to the teaching environment by those mandates.
Thank you, Amy. A.J. Zwetler?
Well, certainly, as a member of this community, that's definitely something that I think about a lot. I think about, certainly, there are many children who are experiencing mental health issues and are hurting. And it's really, really hard to learn when you're hurting. We have Carisalis. Do enough people know about that? Do enough students, families have access to mental health supports? You know, Lift Program, all of those things were right smack dab in the middle of this strategic plan, and there are things that are coming to continue to further, you know, the supports for students, you know, bigger access for pre-kindergarten and starting earlier. So, I believe that all of those things will have a helpful hand in, in closing that gap.
Thank you, A.J. Mark Holm?
It's a community issue, too. There's a lot of resources, a lot of programs in the community that can partner with the schools, but we need to get to these children at an early age. But we need to get to these children at an early age, but we can't forget about the ones that are already there. And so we, you know, all kids learn at different levels, different ways, different speeds. And that's where our teachers come into play, is to make sure they have lesson plans for all our kids. You know, this kind of goes back to the last question. When the parents are involved, the kids learn better. So that's one of the issues with neighborhood schools is if we could focus on being excellent at the basics and get our parents involved, some of these issues will take care of themselves.
Thank you, Mark. Betsy Holder?
If you look at this state data, the least, the smallest achievement gap is when a child enters kindergarten in our schools and continues to grow up through middle school and high school. Our focus needs to be on kindergarten through third grade, those crucial years for learning how to read and literacy. We have kids in our high schools who are not, have not reached literacy, who have the ability to be literate. We need to, in my, make sure that every child has pre-K opportunities. And we also need to take a holistic approach, looking at all of the kids, and it cannot be a one-size-fits-all. We need to look at the backgrounds of our students, their home lives, and everything that impacts their ability to come to school and learn. And focus on that so when they hit third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, they don't keep falling behind.
Thank you, Betsy. And Jamar Brown.
It's my turn. So, the question is, how would I solve it as a board member? As a board member, I won't solve it. I'm not the education expert. And so, but what I do do as a board member is create an environment and the opportunities for the educational experts to get together, to talk, to collaborate, so we can address the issues that are happening in our schools, that are happening in our homes, that are happening in our communities. Because, as has been said already, when all of those entities get together, when they all work in concert with each other, that's how we have the best educational outcomes for our schools. So for me, that's how I would solve it, by bringing the experts who know this work, who do this work on a daily basis, who study this work, and let them answer and let them solve the work that they have dedicated their lives to.
Thank you, Jamar. This next question, we're going to start with you, A.J. Swetler. One of the objectives included in Unit Four's 2020 to 2025 strategic plan is an increased percentage of all students performing at or above grade level. What actions would you propose taking to achieve this objective?
Well, we've mentioned a lot about reading. I think that we need to start earlier. Do enough students have access to pre-kindergarten? You know, that's certainly in the strategic plan as well. You know, I think that, you know, being on this board, I would make sure that, I'm saying "um" a lot, I apologize. This is my first rodeo at this, so forgive me. But, you know, I think that, you know, there are a lot of things that are currently, you know, in place. But we definitely need to keep the conversation open with parents, with those experts. You know, just keeping that conversation open and, you know, listening to everyone.
Thank you, A.J. Mark Holm? Absolutely. One of the objectives included in Unit Four's 2020-2025 strategic plan is an increased percentage of all students performing at or above grade level. What actions would you propose taking to achieve this objective?
I think it comes down to an individual learning plan for our students. The ones that have outside help might not need as much help during the school day. The ones that don't have outside help might need more help during the school day, i.e. maybe aides, maybe some more reading recovery. I think reading is the key, and we need to start that at an early age and tailor a plan for our kids that are already there to get to a level to where they can function and be productive citizens and read at grade level.
Thank you. Betsy?
I think this is a question that needs to be posed to our teachers. They are the ones that really know what's going on in the classrooms, and they're in the trenches day in, day out. They're the ones that know why our kids are not at the level that they should be. And to a degree, how to increase it. We've spent a lot of money and time on consultants, but I think we really need to focus on bringing things back to within our own schools and asking the teachers, what do we need here? How do we, how do we improve, how do we improve these scores? How do we improve the overall learning? And obviously, early literacy, improving that, increasing that, as well as math proficiency are going to be, you know, the objectives there. But again, I think it's going to our teachers and really listening to them as to why we aren't there and what's, what the problems are.
Thank you, Betsy. Mark Thies?
I think classroom size is a big issue. There was an article in the paper recently talked about Champaign classroom sizes being one of the highest in our area. So I think we need to recruit and retain more qualified teachers, and we need to pay them well. It's a very hard job. I can't believe how many hours my wife would spend every night doing her preparation for the next day. So, and I think the other thing to address this is from a quote from Colin Powell. Colin Powell once said, "Every child deserves a laptop in this country." That's a lap of a mother, a father, an aunt, an uncle, a community friend, a mentor, somebody to tell these kids how important it is to have this education. That you've got to go to school. That you've got to show up on time. You've got to do your homework. Forty-one percent chronic absenteeism is too much. Education is the pathway for these students for success and for our community. Because I do believe you need to have a strong school to have a strong community.
Thank you, Mark. Jamar Brown?
Let me actually read the question one more time.
Absolutely. One of the objectives included in Unit Four's 2020 to 2025 strategic plan is an increased percentage of all students performing at or above grade level. What actions would you propose taking to achieve this objective?
So, again, the one thing that I would do is, again, call in the experts who do this. But I would, as a board member, facilitate the time, the space to have our district go into our communities. You know, so in the different neighborhoods where we have, where our students aren't performing as well or as high, like, we literally set up shop in those areas. So if that's north end, south end, west end, east end, that's where we'll be. We'll talk to those families individually. What is it that you need? What is it that you want? If there's a family in particular, what does your child need to succeed? How do you do this at home to make, help your child succeed and start to implement some of those in our classrooms, in our education? Because yes, every child's going to be judged off of their scores at the end of the day, but how we get there to good scores can be differently, different for each child.
Thank you, Jamar. Amy Armstrong?
I think anybody that follows our board meeting knows that I consistently send out a message that the federal government is currently defunding public education to the tune of thirty percent towards special education funding. That means the General Education Fund moves millions of dollars out of the General Education Fund from serving all students to backfill the budget deficit that the federal government leaves. That is a building. That is a program. That is a ball field. Those are plenty of opportunities that are left undone because the federal government does not fulfill its promise for funding. Senator Bennett and I had met. We were going to tackle this together. That's one issue. And the next issue is Dr. Boozer has brought forward repeatedly is having high expectations for our students and keeping those expectations high. And she has seen a reduction of expectation. If we bring that back up and hold students to those expectations, we know they can meet it.
Thank you, Amy. Jeff Brownfield?
So, the teachers obviously are going to be our experts on this, and we need to go and talk with them. And that's what I've been doing over the last few months. I've spent countless hours meeting with teachers in all kinds of different settings and asking them, how do we, how do we fix this? How do we make sure our kids are at grade level at least? It was said a little bit earlier, so if we look at our math scores right now, at third grade, we have seventy-one percent of our kids aren't meeting, fourth grade seventy-six, and then eighty percent when we get to fifth grade. Our teachers are going to be the ones that are going to solve that, okay? And so we need to go and we need to speak with them in much more detail to get their ideas of how do we solve, how do we solve these particular problems. One of the other things they have said is, let's look at our curriculum. How do we integrate our curriculum so that we are using our math curriculum in concert with our language arts curriculum? How do we integrate those things together? Instead of just sitting down and doing rote multiplication tables, how do we use our curriculum to say, look, this is why you need multiplication? As we're in high school, if you want to be a carpenter, this is why you need math, okay? You need to know how to build a ramp. A ramp requires trigonometry. A ramp requires being able to, oops, I'm sorry. Again, I keep missing your sign. I apologize. So we will, we will leave it there. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Sixty seconds goes quickly when you're in the hot seat. This next question, we're going to kick off with you, Jamar Brown. What do you see as the pros and cons of having school resource officers work in schools? And what do you recommend be done to increase positive aspects and reduce negative ones?
So, school resource officer is a touchy subject. For me, it's an important one that I've gone back and forth on over the years, especially during my time on the board. I am not against school resource officers being in our schools because we definitely live in a different world today than we did years ago where there has to be someone, something to keep our students, our faculty, and our staff safe and at the very least have the feeling of being safe. However, I think for our particular district, I would like to see that the district have more input on who those resource officers are, what trainings they may need to have to be in our schools, to work with our children. Because every person isn't meant to be around kids. So, I mean, as long as I say it, we need planning than that. And so if the district had more input on who that, who those individuals are, I definitely would be in support of that instead of just giving us who went through the training.
Thank you, Jamar. Jeff Brownfield?
In general, I'd be in favor of having the school resource officers come back. I know they were, due to staffing issues, they had left. Again, in the meetings that I've had with teachers and with parents in particular, one of the big issues that comes up continually is I would like for my kids to be in classes that are free of disruptions and free of violence. As I talk with the teachers, the same thing, they bring up the same thing. You know, we need, we need to make sure that there's not, you know, continual violence in our hallways during passing periods or any other, any other particular time. So, I do agree with the, with the first speaker. They certainly need to be trained appropriately. They certainly need to go through specialized training that are for school resource officers as opposed to a general, a general police officer to do that. But I would be in big favor of bringing those back, especially to the high school level and probably to the middle school level as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Mark Thies?
Generally, I would be in favor of school resource officers. Need to learn a little bit more about, about that whole process of how they do get selected. I think that's a valid point that Jamar brought up. I think the bigger issue is having an effective discipline plan to have a respectful classroom. None of us, if we're in a nuclear scientist class, at the, nuclear physics class at the UNIVI, in first five minutes, we'd be lost and we'd be causing problems in the back. We need to have a way to have an effective discipline plan so those teachers can have a respective classroom. And getting those kids at grade level so they're not lost and behind, causing trouble, I think is the big answer to that.
Thank you, Mark. Amy Armstrong?
As a parent to my oldest, who was a disruption to the educational environment, I think our SRO conversations have been intense. They have been collaborative with the city. They have been collaborative with community entities. And it's a tough decision because we do want to keep our schools safe. And it's not necessarily that the school's unsafe. It's what's happening in the community plays out within the school building. Our SRO officers in the past have been well-trained. They develop relationships with the students. And it has been an effective program. However, Dr. Boozer has brought forward SSAs, which are student support advocates. She is trying to move this model more toward mentoring and having adults present in the hallways to get in front of this and develop relationships with our students. And ultimately, our students and our families voted to have SROs in the building. And that really is the voice that matters most to the board, is what do our students want and what do our families say?
Thank you, Amy. Betsy Holder?
I'm generally in favor of SROs, especially at the high school level. I think I'm saying that with the reservation of, it depends on who they are. We need people who are, we don't need outside agencies coming from Chicago. And I understand that there is a lack of individuals, hiring people in the police force in this community. But I think we need people who are vested in this community as SROs, people who know the kids, who know the families, and who can actually form relationships rather than just from a punitive, punitive manner, but to help these kids so we don't have as many disruptions. And I think, again, it's something that we do need to listen to the teachers and the students and the families as far as whether we put SROs in our schools.
Thank you, Betsy. Mark Holm?
Thank you. Generally, in favor of SROs. Again, I'm one of those who thinks that you've got to have the right people. You know, what happens in the community comes from our schools. With an SRO, they should have access to outside agencies to communicate the information to let them know what's going on out in the community that could possibly come out in our schools. I think positive interaction with law enforcement is a life skill. It's something that should be a positive, and the kids should learn that it's positive and they are there to help, not harm them. And let's get the right people at the right spot, and let's make it a positive for the community.
Thank you, Mark. A.J. Swetler?
Well, not to sound like a broken record, but I also, you know, am generally in favor of SROs. They just need to have the correct mental health training. There are a lot of students, I said before, who are hurting. So I would be concerned that, you know, that they would need to have the correct mental health training. And, you know, certainly continuing to have that conversation with parents. You know, what's working and what's not working certainly is important to me.
Thank you, A.J. Mark Holm, you have this next question first. The collaborative Unit Four LIFT program is designed to ensure participating students and families can succeed and thrive despite difficult circumstances or challenges in their scholastic or personal lives. What do you see are the strengths and needs of the LIFT program?
I think the LIFT program's ideas are correct in that, you know, it's, we need outside sources to help our kids be successful, whether it's their parents, outside agencies, outside collaboration. I think this is a move in the right direction. Again, it's, we've got to have the right people in the right position at the right time, at the right place to make this successful for the benefit of our community.
Thank you, Mark. Mark Thies?
I was blessed with parents that instilled in me the importance of education, helped me with my homework. And I think LIFT is a good, a good program. Then we need to get more community involvement to find that community member, that aunt, uncle, parent, somebody that can help instill that idea that how important it is for education. It is the lifeblood of success for all of our students.
Thank you, Mark. A.J. Swetler?
I'm very excited about this program. I think it's wonderful. I think it's necessary. I really want to pay attention to the data as we move forward in this program. But I think it's a big deal for not just the students, but their families to have support as well. So, continuing to monitor that data and paying attention to what's working and what's not working and making sure that we, as a board, react to that. But I'm a very, very big fan of the LIFT program. I think it's absolutely necessary to have in our community.
Thank you, A.J. Betsy Holder?
I am in favor of the LIFT program. I do think it is in its infancy, and I think a lot can be done for the LIFT program. I know it encompasses the whole family, but questions need to be asked in, how is it being implemented? Who's implementing it? And how are we recruiting students and families to the LIFT program? Again, I think it is a, there is a, a lot of positive that it has a potential to come from that. But I think it's one of those programs that we really need to foster and make sure that we are, we are engaging the families and the students who need to be engaged in the program and ask ourselves, how can we do this? What's the best way that we can do this? And what resources do we need from the community to also help further? And what resources do we need from the community to also help further impact these families?
Thank you, Betsy. Next up, Jeff Brownfield?
So the LIFT program is fine, any program. It doesn't really matter what, what it is, is fine if it's going to, if it's going to help our students. Again, in concert with our faculty and in concert with family members. To promote all of our educational opportunities that we have here in our, in our community. The most important aspect of any of that is, again, is to allow those students, again, the students, parents, whomever. Guardians, whatever, to, to have that opportunity to do that. It needs to be set up. Or we need to make sure that it's set up in such a way that times are available for, for parents, students and faculty to all come together. But any of the, any of the programs we have, I think, I, I hope LIFT succeeds. I hope it, I hope it succeeds beyond belief. But if it, but if it doesn't, we need to have some kind of program that would be somewhat similar, at least in characteristics.
Thank you, Jeff. Jamar Brown?
So I'm in favor of the LIFT program or a program, any program like LIFT. Anything that brings students, faculty, staff and families, community together in one room and get everyone on the same. Page and on the same accord is definitely what we need in our community to have our students achieve at the highest standards possible. And bring in that high expectation of achievement. One of the things that LIFT could use is advocacy from the district, advocacy from the community. So more people that are in the community that could benefit from it, that have never heard of LIFT program can hear about it and actually take advantage of the services. They would also just continue to need the support from the administration and also just continued resources. Programs like this are usually a lot of the times the first ones to get cut in budgets. And so if this program shows that it is working, families are taking advantage of it and our students are achieving. I would like to see the funding continue on in years to come. And if needed, if it needs to increase, if it's working, let's put our money where our mouth is and let it work.
Thank you, Jamar. Amy Armstrong?
The LIFT program is the brainchild of Joan Walls, deputy city manager. And this was her dream. And we were so proud as a board to join in and fund this with them. The LIFT program, its strengths are it is holistic wraparound supports for targeted students and families. And that means moving into the community with them and whatever they need. Is it home? Is it food? Is it stability? When you have dysregulated adults, you typically have dysregulated students. And so wrapping around them intentionally, give them a safe environment. This is not meant to be a push-in mentoring program. This is targeted so that the families maintain their privacy and their dignity in the process. The weaknesses of it, it's not big enough. We have a waiting list. We have lots of families to serve. And it is in its infancy, but I do trust the city staff. I do trust that the University of Illinois is also in here, is doing the oversight and the research and the data take on that. And they are informing the decisions that the city and the district make together to push this forward.
Thank you very much, Amy. This next question will kick off with you, Mark These. How will you use your skills and experience to enhance the performance of underachieving students?
As a certified financial planner, I've always had to help people prioritize their finances and their goals. And I think one of the things that we could do at Unit Four is I don't think we have a money problem. I think we just have to direct our money in the right way. So maybe going to baseline budgeting where we prop up the programs that are very effective, maybe LIFT is that program. And we put more resources behind it. Or the things that aren't as effective, maybe we need to start to pull those programs back. Take that money and redirect it towards those, the basics of that core education.
Thank you, Mark. Jamar Brown?
Can you read the question again?
Sure. How will you use your skills and experience to enhance the performance of underachieving students?
So I'm a product of champagne. I mean, I've been here my entire life and so, and I'm a community guy and I build relationships. And so my, that's my skill. I build relationships. I bring people together. And I help families navigate the system that they're unfamiliar with, unheard in. And just don't know where to go next. And many of our unachieving, underachieving students are a part of those, a part of that group. And so my skill is to bring those families in and make them seen, make them heard. And make resources and knowledge of the district available to them. So their students can no longer, no longer have to be underachieving. But they'll have just as much of an opportunity as every other student.
Thank you, Jamar. Jeff Brownfield?
I was a, I was an agency director for years for the state of Illinois. And with that job, the particular one I had, required me to oftentimes. Bring union representatives as well as state university administrations together to accomplish something, whatever the something was. Oftentimes it was change of statutes, state statutes. Sometimes it was change of, of state administrative rules to do that. I think one of the strengths that I have is sitting down, and again, I know I sound like a broken record, but the ideas that I have have come from the, the, the teachers and the students and the parents that I've met with over these, over these last months. Is to sit down, starting with our faculty members, is to sit down with them and all of the administration as well as community members. To determine what is the best path forward to make sure that all of our students, again, especially our students who are low-income students. Are achieving the goals they need. Public education is the only way we have to bring people who are in lower socioeconomic areas up to much higher levels. I'm the product of that myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mark Holm?
One more time.
Absolutely. How will you use your skills and experience to enhance the performance of underachieving students?
For the last thirty-eight years, that's what we've been doing at the Don Moir Boys and Girls Club in collaboration with all these type of programs. You know, they call it LIFT, but we've been doing it for twenty-six years at the Boys and Girls Club. We understand how to, how programs work and how to enhance the at-risk children. And so my experience has been that for, like I said, thirty-eight years of doing that through the programs. They're in collaboration with the school district and other community factors. And I think there's plenty of programs out there that we could do that, that we can bring to bear to our, our families and our teachers to make this a better place for.
Thank you so much, Mark. Amy Armstrong?
It's a familiar refrain from this board, that budgets are moral documents. And our budgets have been targeting our buildings and supporting our students. And our students are achievers. If, the particular subset of students that are actually most marginalized in Unit Four right now are students with IEPs. And I happen to have a skill set where I can at least review the budgets, understand the financing. Understand that our current CFO, who also came from the financial planning world and has more licensures than I can count. But also has a degree in education. And so she has been targeting the building budgets to support our students who are underperforming. The skill set I bring is helping families find and navigate those sources. There's lots of support in the community. There's lots of the Family Resiliency Center on campus. There are lots of places in our community that will help our students and our families and our teachers. It, it came to a crushing realization that we are feeling the Rauler effect. We lost over seventy social service agencies in our community during that budget freeze. And I think that's what we're feeling today.
Thank you, Amy. A.J. Swetler?
Well, I've, I've said before, I'm a social worker and mental health matters to me. I would certainly agree that our students with IEPs are very underserved. And I'm, I'm, I'm here to do the work to make sure that those students are ready for life after graduation. I work for a, a local nonprofit that, that helps support people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So I want to make sure that, again, those, those students are ready for life. Do we have a program where students can start to attend adult services? You know, during the summertime so that they're ready and they have already got connections when they graduate? You know, mentors from programs like mine to, to younger students who can, who can show them, hey. I am a successful adult living in this community and you can be too.
Thank you, A.J. Betsy Holder?
As far as experience goes, I had the privilege of helping start a performing arts program at Don Moir Boys and Girls Club before, before the pandemic. And the number one thing I noticed and I learned from there is it's about opportunity. A lot of these kids don't have opportunities. I think one of the biggest things for our underachieving kids is giving them those opportunities. And as part of that, and my skill set, I'm an attorney. So I do a lot with negotiations, mediations, collaborations. I think in order to get to a point where we help on a, on a larger scale our underachieving students is to have a collaboration. And to really work for collaboration between our teachers, our administrators and our school board so that we can all be on the same page.
Thank you, Betsy. I am not a product of Unit Four schools, but of 116. And I've done the math. And we do not have time to do another question because there's seven of you in five minutes. I think I, did I do that right? Okay, what I do want to do though is start each of you with your two-minute summation of why we should elect you. And I'm going to go backwards this time. And we're going to start with you, A.J. Swetler.
Wow, this is my first time where I'm first for something twice in one day. That's awesome. Well, I challenge our voters to pick the four candidates that they believe will come together. And continuing to make our district the best it can be. I would be honored to roll up my sleeves and be part of that team. So I would be very happy to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, A.J. Mark These?
Again, my theme is I need, I believe that we need to have strong schools so we have strong communities. My priorities as a Unit Four School Board member would be to focus on that back-to-basics teaching. Have career-ready graduates. Not everybody wants to go to college right away. They need to be ready to go into those trades. We need to deal with chronic absenteeism. We need to have an effective plan for having disciplined and respectful classrooms. We need to be accountable and transparent. Definitely fiscally responsible for how we spend the taxpayer's money. And we can improve the board communication, not only amongst the board members, but between the public. I think that's a, a real challenge. The, the meetings that I've attended and watched. I think we really need to have public comment at the beginning of board meetings, before the vote. Before people vote on, on their, on their, on their issues at hand. I want the board to have the input from the community so we can make the better decisions.
Thank you, Mark These. Mark Holm?
Back to basics. Let's excel at the basics. Then we can deal with these other issues once we get our students and teachers performing on an excellent, on the basics. Teacher input, you know, we need to have more teacher input. They are our experts. We don't need to be hired outside consultants. We have plenty here in this town. The kids need to know that someone cares. They need to know they have expectations on them. Work with our state and federal elected representatives to solve some of these unfunded mandates. And some of these things that take away all this time from our kids, from our teachers and our kids to, to learn. Openness. I don't think we have a very open format for our school board in our district. For somebody who's been trying to find out information about it for years, it, it just seems like it's all public money. I don't understand why it's so hard for us to get the correct information without doing a FOIA request. So I want to be open. I want everything out on the, I'd like, within laws, whatever we could do, I want to be more open with our, with our community. I like the idea of the SROs. I think it solves a few issues. You know, what happens out in the community comes to our schools. Our teachers need to be there to teach. And SROs can help them. In dealing with some of these discipline issues, I believe, so that they can spend more time with the, teaching with the kids. I mean, it all comes down to those minutes in the classroom. They're, they're precious few now. So let's not make it any worse on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Betsy Holder?
First, I'd like to thank everybody again who is involved in this today. Our schools are the foundation of our community and they are part of the health of our community. There's a lot of work to be done that the pandemic has revealed, and not just in our community, across the country and across the world. I've had experience and I am passionate about volunteering within our community. I've served on boards of Montessori, Mother's Morning Out, now My Morning Out. I've worked with Don Moir Boys and Girls Club. And I've been on Junior League and done a, a large amount of community outreach during the pandemic for. For individuals who, for both vaccine outreach and many of the issues that were going on within our community. As a, as a member of the school board, if I ever be elected, again, as I've kind of echoed throughout this. I am, I really want to focus on that achievement gap in K, K through third grade. What are we going to do to set all of our students off on the right trajectory? It starts there. It starts in the early years. And I also think part of that is we need everybody on the same page. We need our teachers working with the board, working with the administrators. And to have a collaboration and unity going forward for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Jeff Brownfield?
The board serves you and it serves your students. That's all we're here to do, is to serve the students and to serve you and our faculty. If I'm elected, I will promise you two things. Absolute. I will answer every email you send to me. I will meet with you anytime, anyplace, anywhere that you want to. No matter if you agree with me or if you disagree with me, I will be happy to sit down and talk with you. If I'm elected, my absolute first motion will be that we move public comment to the beginning of our agenda. As an agency director, I demanded that public comment be at the beginning of our agenda. I also demanded that it be part of any significant agenda item that was going to be on that agenda for that particular meeting. We need the comments from you all and from our teachers and from you all that are here. And also lots of times from your kids. Kids usually are better than the rest of us in expressing what is going on at their particular schools. In fact, I wouldn't mind having a public comment. That has to be from kids, that we would do that too. As I said, as a kind of a broken record here, I've spent lots and lots of hours talking with teachers about what they think they need to know. Or what, what I need to know from them, I should say. And they've given me lots of ideas. One of the things, again, that I want to get back to is, and I think, I think Ms. Holder was saying, we have to make sure that K through three is our most important area that we have to start with. Okay? That is the most important aspect to get our kids those foundations as they boo, as they move along. We also, from a staff, staff shortage kind of standpoint. There are programs throughout the country that are funded by the federal government that are teacher intern, or teacher apprenticeship programs, just like craft and trade apprenticeships. You get paid to become a teacher. You get free tuition to become a teacher. I don't know why we're not doing those in our district, but we should do those. We should do those. It will help our teachers. So if you're working at a bank and you want to be a teacher, you can't just quit your job and go to school for four years if you don't already have a degree. But what you can do is you can come and work part-time, earn a wage, get your tuition and so on. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you all for being here. And again, thank you to the moderator.
Thank you, Jeff. Jamar Brown?
Okay, so I've been on the board before. You know, I, I served four years on this, on this, at, at this district. So you can, you can look and see what the work, everything that I say I can, I, I will do, I have already done. And I, and I put the time and I put the effort in. I, I've always been a relationship builder. I've always been a community advocate. I go into the schools and I always tell the students, I'm your union. I speak for you. And so that's who I am and, and I'm, and I'm a bridge builder. I lived in this community for forty years. I have no intention of leaving anytime soon. And so what students come out of Unit Four directly affect my life every day. Because they're going to be the ones taking care of me as I get older. They're going to be caregivers. They're going to be my police. They're going to be my attorneys. They're going to be everything that touches me in my life. And so I'm running for the school board, not because I have a very direct. Dog in the fight per se, but because I care about this community. And, and, and I'm passionate about the success of champagne, the success of Unit Four, and just the success of our children in general. And that's why I'm in this race. And that's why I would like your vote. What I hear a lot is the community doesn't feel heard. They don't feel seen. A lot of students, we talked about all of these students, most of our questions about the underserved, the underheard, the, the, that's, that's who I speak for. That's who I speak for. And that, no matter what that student looks like, no matter what that family looks like, no matter their socioeconomic status. I want to be the voice of reason and I want to be the voice for you all when it comes to the district to help you all navigate the system. And to get the right information that you want, simply because I care. And that's it.
Thank you, Jamar. Amy Armstrong?
Thank you. Thank you again to everyone for coming out. It's an important discussion. The community deserves servant leaders who are best prepared to move forward with the strategic plan. Implement the superintendent's goals and follow current initiatives. The contract between the Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Boozer delegates the day-to-day operations of Unit Four to her. And it is the work of the board to support her. And it is the work of the board to support her as she dismantles systems that are failing and creates opportunities for our staff. Clear and regular communication with the superintendent, as well as monitoring performance through regular reviews of district goals, leads to professional relationships that sets the district up for success. We have prioritized Dr. Boozer's voice at our meetings to our community. Therefore, everyone is getting the same information at the same time. Taxpayer, staff, and most notably, students deserve and need knowledgeable candidates who have regularly attended board meetings, have intentionally involved themselves in the district's strategic planning, or have been directly serving on committees in Unit 4. Continuity and stability of the Board of Education are paramount to our students' success in healthy, healthy public schools. I am prepared, committed, and involved in this work, and I am committed to serving another four years, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you to everybody. Today would not be possible without the League of Women Voters of Champaign County, IL Vote of Champaign County, the NAACP Champaign County Branch, Indivisible Rural Illinois, Bend the Ark Jewish Action Champaign-Urbana, and the News Gazette. Daryl Homan, thank you for your time, for being here today. Jennifer Lask, Michelle Branch, we wouldn't be able to do it without your timekeeping. I want to thank our audience, the timekeepers, all of the candidates for being here today. Again, it's not easy to put yourself out there and be a candidate. Are you still uncertain with anything about the candidates or the election? Make sure you check it out. Most of the Q and As are uploaded there. Now, don't leave, though, because we have the Parkland College trustees and the ones who want to be potentially trustees are going to be speaking here for two minutes each. We're going to take a break here. Afterwards, join for the informal meet and greet in Room C. You can meet all of the school board president, presidents, all of, they all want to be president, all of the school board candidates, Room C. But stick around to hear from Parkland, and thank you all for being here today.